Thank you, sir.
You've done a great job. Very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Okay. Well, with that, since you've clarified so much with your presentation and this additional piece of information about all the state adopted programs and some of the very good...
Those are the nine essential components.
Right, with all of the state elements that we talk so much about here at the board level. If there's no other board comment, could I get a motion to move staff recommendation? Bonnie, seconded by Jonathan. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And good luck with all your work.
From bottom of my heart. Thank you.
All right. That would move us on then to item 11.
Karrick Ashley, Director for Data Management Division. I'm here to present item number 11, Recommendation for Approval of a State Technology Plan to be Submitted to the U.S. Department of Education in Response to Requirements out of Title II Part D, which is Enhancing Education Through Technology. Just as a little bit of background, we did have a state technology plan that we referred to as Connect, Compute, and Compete. Prior to NCLB, there was a SOTO bill that established a Commission on Technology and Learning, CTL, and they were tasked as an advisory panel to this state board to develop a K-12 Education Technology Master Plan, which they did and presented in May of 2003. This board, or the State Board of Education in 2003, reviewed the plan and accepted it, but chose not to submit it to the U.S. Department of Education as the state technology plan because it was expansive, it was visionary, and there was some concern that it might create some state mandates. So, we were tasked to put together a technology plan to present to you for approval to send to the U.S. Department of Education. We took some components out of that master plan. Most of this recommendation, most of this plan comes out of the state's consolidated application that's already been approved by the U.S. Department of Education. It's short, concise, 10 pages. With it is a two-page matrix which shows exactly how we are complying with NCLB Section 2413 in the submission of this plan, and I'm requesting approval to send it to the U.S. Department of Education.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Board discussion first or comment? Does the board have an opinion? Okay, let's take public comment.
I have one speaker signed up, but again, if you want to speak and aren't signed up, please do. Kim Ship.
Kim Ship, Oakland Unified School District, representing the common man, parents and students. As you began to think about approving this plan, which I think is a great thing, I just want us to keep in mind that there are some components in the plan that should be noted. The purpose of the plan is to encourage the effective integration of technology with teachers' training and curricular development, establish successful research-based instructional method designed to assist every student in crossing the digital divide, which I think is very important, to ensure that every student is technologically literate by the end of the eighth grade. The funds cannot be used for administrative purposes. We really need to watch that, such as developing a local technology plan or to set plant existing program. And then, when I was viewing this under the CON app, there is an entire section on how parents would be involved with the technology process, so keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes board comment, or do I have another? No, okay. All right. Any board comment on this? Or do I have a motion to? Thank you. Second? Ricky? All those in favor? Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Onto item 12. Alice?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Alice Parker, Special Education Division. I am bringing you not only a board item, but a blue item. It is a request for you to allow us to go out for public comment to slightly amend our regulations regarding highly qualified teachers using the House standards. IDEA was reauthorized in December, and it gave new flexibility, in particular, for new middle and high school multiple-subject teachers, so that it would allow those teachers who come to a school district with competency in math, English, language arts, reading, or science to have two years, using the House standards, to move forward. That would be what we would be taking out for public comment. So, we're asking for the 45-day period. It's a good thing because special ed teachers are one of the major shortages in the United States.
Okay. Ruth? And then Joe.
I just have one question. How do, how does this fit in with the CTC, the standards for teachers for special education? Have you coordinated with them?
We have been. We have been meeting with them. We've been talking about many issues. One of the issues that we need to get clarity with CTC is the fact that IDEA went into, the one provision that went into effect on December 3rd when the president signed the bill, was the provision that all special ed teachers in the United States needed to have clear special ed credentials, no waivers, permits, emergencies, et cetera. A clear credential being a full special education credential or in an approved intern program. And so, we've been working with CTC around that whole issue as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alice, help me with the special ed area now requires that the teachers be highly qualified. When will you be putting forward the House requirements for special ed teachers?
That, this is the first piece of that.
Now, are we waiting for regulations?
We are.
More direction?
We are.
So, tell me what that piece is.
Because there are a couple of other pieces. One allows for teachers who work with the most profoundly disabled children to have either a special education, have the clear special education credential and either an elementary or demonstrate competency in the areas in which they teach. We need regulatory guidance from the U.S. Department of Ed on that. We're going to see their draft regs in a week or two.
I was going to ask, do we have any sense about when those final regs? And at that point, then, we will continue that work?
We will continue that work. We have been admonished by the U.S. Department of Education not to promulgate regulations based on their first draft regs. You're right. And so, we're going to take them at their word on that. But, we actually have one of the national proposed rulemaking hearings here in Sacramento on the 22nd of June.
As you probably know, that we have a committee of teachers who are chomping at the bit, who are dying to work with you to get that done, and so, I just wanted to be able to take back to them that we're waiting for the regulations and...
Absolutely, and we're looking forward to working with them as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other further board comment? No? All right. I have a motion to approve the commencement.
Do you have speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Deborah. I'm sorry. Do apologize. Public speaker?
I have Dick Bray, Martha Wallace, and Sylvia DeRuevo. Anyone else?
Martha Wallace, California Teachers. Timing is of essence here, that we're looking at developing the regs and getting out a new House for the special ed, especially at high school and new teachers, middle school and new teachers in special ed, because they need to be qualified in every subject they teach, not just having a degree in math, but also the degree or an equivalent in language arts, science, history, all of those things. And so, we're really hoping to see the House form come out as soon as possible, so they can get the courses they need, the training they need, the paperwork they need. And we think that they need at least a year to be able to do that. I'm hoping that we're not going to wait until next January to publish that House and then say, "Well, by June, you need to have proved that you're qualified." Say, somebody was hired this year, that's the two years in June, a year from now. And they need that time. I understand that seven or eight states have already moved forward on this issue and have come out with something, so that we're getting into the rulemaking here, and I think we need to come out with the new House form as soon as possible. I am on this committee that Joe was just mentioning. We've put together a proposed House for the special ed teachers, and we'll be forwarding that to you, the board members, soon, so that you can look at that and get things going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to add a piece. The House form we're using for our other highly qualified teachers to be able to take advantage of is the same that we'll be using for special education teachers. So, that form is there on the website.
Thank you, Alice. Sherry?
I'm not Dick Bray. Sherry Griffith. Sherry Griffith with AXA. We're very supportive of the regulations. We think this is an area where you can put on your party hats and say that the federal government did listen. We testified both at the IDA regulation hearings, pre-hearings, as well as when the federal teacher panel came out to California, and we said we have challenges, especially with self-contained classrooms at the secondary level. And I think they heard us, and this language reflects that, so we're very supportive of it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Sylvia?
Sylvia DeRuevo, Cars Plus. Yes, this is definitely a chance to wear your party hat, because new teachers, I work a lot with interns in the districts, they are credential teachers, they're working away, going to school several nights a week, and their question is, "When I'm done, will I be highly qualified?" And they're putting a tremendous investment into teaching our students with special needs, and they do want to come out being highly qualified. And so, a House for new teachers is extremely important. We've been talking to CTA about what that would look like, because we need to look at the things that they're required to do and already use some of those to create a House. We still have concerns for those teachers who have a multiple-subject credential but are teaching prerequisite skills in the middle schools and high schools, so they may not be teaching content matter, high school content matter, and have a multiple-subject credential. This particular, these regulations don't really pertain to them. They talk about someone who has a single-subject credential or who has competency in one area. So, that is something that we need to continue to look at, because several of them have passed that CSAT, that GRE, that MSAT, whatever that test was, to make them competent in a multiple-subject area, but not in a single-subject area, and I don't see that addressing this. So, thank you.
And does that conclude public comment? Then, I need a maker of the following motion, and this would be to approve the commencement of the rulemaking process for the proposed revisions to the Highly Qualified Teacher Regulations, including the initial statement of reasons with the necessary technical changes and the proposed, notice of proposed rulemaking and direct staff to conduct a public hearing on the proposed regulations. Bonnie, second. Ricky, all those in favor? I believe the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Ruth?
Yes?
I have to excuse myself for the remainder of the meeting. I apologize. I have to be attending an orientation, but thank you so much. See you tomorrow morning.
Hi, Ricky. You'll be having more fun than...
Wouldn't miss that, I don't think.
Yes, Ricky will join us again tomorrow. All right. Thank you. Moving on, item 13.
Karrick Ashley, Director for Data Management Division. I'm presenting item 13, Request for Approval of the California Technology Assistant Project Grants for 11 Regional Lead Agencies. These are the same 11 regional agencies that received the grants three years ago. We have provided the last two years evaluations of those services. Mostly, what they do is provide local support, professional development, helping technology to promote technology literacy, and to integrate technology effectively into the curriculum with these 11 regional agencies. We did tighten up some of the accountability requirements, requiring some governance policy documents. So, of the 11 regional agencies, six of them have fully met all requirements, and we're asking for regular approval for those grants. For the other five, we're asking for conditional approval. We don't see this as an issue, but conditioned upon finishing and getting approval from their own regional governance council of these documents. So, we're asking for approval for these 11 regional agencies.
Okay. Board comment? Questions? Public comment? No move? Okay. Way to go, Ruth. I like that. Okay. I have Ruth making the motion, Ken seconding. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Karrick. All right. Onto item 14, Camille and Gino, CCRs.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored to represent the Superintendent and the Department of Education in presenting item 14 to you. It is a review of the redesigned instrument for Coordinated Compliance Review, more commonly known as the CCR and the CCR process. Let me give you a quick background for our new board members. In April, the board, the department provided the board some information item on the background to the Coordinated Compliance Review process, statutory requirements, and the activities relating over the past year to a redesign of the instrument. We sent a template to the board for review, and we also included the draft template for the migrant education program for the board's review. So, today, what I'm asking you to do is to take the last-minute item, which contains a number of attachments, and they are the updated templates for each of the programs, and I'll be glad to, I'd like to walk through them with you after I give you some opening background on this situation. The state and federal laws applying to a variety of categorical programs require the Department of Education to monitor the implementation of these programs by local educational agencies, or LEAs. The state oversight is really accomplished in part by conducting onsite reviews of these programs administered by the LEAs. The board members, some of which represent superintendencies and principalships, are very familiar with this process. We provide advanced notification of them. We then come and do an onsite review, and we do some documentation, or we require and request some documentation for which we review at that time. And the purpose of the review is to verify compliance with the requirements of each categorical program and to ensure that the program funds are being spent to increase student performance and achievement. In fall of 2003, the superintendent directed the department to embark on a review as well as a redesign of the CCR process. Now, the superintendent gave us very strict orders to put it on the fast track, and we attempted to do that. In doing that, we engaged a large number of stakeholders statewide, our various program consultants within the department, and those who are program officials across. There were a number of improvements we were able to make, but we couldn't make all of them in time. This is basically the second stage. We come to data to the board so that they may review the process and to ensure that the CCR instrument is consistent with state board policy. We propose that the content of the current instrument is very similar to the previous one, meaning that we did not overhaul the whole system, but we tried to streamline it to ensure that it was consistent with the requirements in code or in statute for each of the programs for which we are to review. So, the instrument basically has been updated to clarify our current legal requirements. The instrument has also been reconfigured into seven dimensions representing the program requirements and sequence, so that each dimension builds upon itself, builds upon the preceding one, and eventually gets to the key concept of teaching and learning. And in addition, the 2005/06 CCR instrument includes core items and supporting items, and the core items are the key issues upon, it defines who must do what. That's the key piece to all of those. I'm going to ask you to take a look at the very first one that is listed in your package, and it is the CalSafe or the California School Age Families Education as an example. If you'll see, you'll see that on the right-hand side, the program dimensions are the seven categorical programs are reviewed upon these dimensions as they build upon each one. And you'll notice that off to the left side are the desired program outcomes for this. These are what are captured in statute, and if you'll notice that under each one, or at the conclusion of each one, ed code or the citations that require these programs are listed therein. This is the key issue for this particular program, and then each of the following attachments of all the various state and federal programs that we monitor are listed for each one. What the board does not have in its package for this are two key items, oh, I'm sorry, three items. The CalServe, Educational Equity, and HIV/AIDS, which are programs, have not yet been completed and will be presented to the board at a later time. What I want to ensure the board is that in our process of reviewing and ensuring that each of the instruments are meeting the requirements, we combined our review process with our stakeholders as well as CDE program staff. We shared this with our legal office as well as the board staff to ensure that what we brought forth to you is exactly meeting that requirement. And then, in addition to these instruments, as I said, we've shared these with some of our external stakeholders in meetings across the state and some held here in the department. We shared these electronically with various groups who represent these students who would be affected by these various programs, and so, we thought, we feel that they've been very well shared. We presented this to the board, and while I realize it's a last-minute item, I believe that we posted it prior to the weekend on our CDE and state board website for public review of that, and we noted to our stakeholders that it would be up previous to this. So, while it's a last-minute item, it was actually an early last-minute item.
I think we need some more colors, just to delineate. We're in the process, yeah.
As opposed to a late last-minute item, yes.
This is light blue, not ultra-blue.
So, again, if you look at the very first one, all of the, all of the attachments are organized exactly the same, that on the front page, or page one of each of them, has on the left the desired outcomes according to statute, on the right, the program dimensions. And again, if you're looking at the CalSafe one as an example. And then, if you'll turn to page two, you'll see that the first core item, in this case, involvement, is identified in the bold print, and under each one are the supporting items for this. Now, in the review process, there are certain documentations or evidence that are required or are reviewed as part of ensuring that the LEA is in compliance with the requirements of this program. You'll see that in the center of the box, and there are some examples of documentation or observation. And in this template, there is a space provided on the right for our findings and comments by those who conduct the reviews. Now, when the review process occurs, and should a district be out of compliance in, for example, in involvement in this one, says the LEA provides comprehensive community-linked school-based program for expectant and parenting students and their children, the supporting items really link to the core items. So, in other words, they, if they're out of compliance, they're only out of compliance on one of the items, even though they may, there may be two examples of that. You'll see that for this program, the other pages that are listed in this attachment go through each of the components of this program. So, item two is governance and administration. Item three is funding, and on this one, item four is standards, assessment, and accountability. So, I'm sorry, and item five is on staffing and professional development. Item six, opportunity and equal educational access. And item seven, teaching and learning. So, it goes, links back to the program dimensions. Now, each one, again, as I said, of the programs that we monitor are captured here in the attachment items. The last item in this last-minute memorandum is item 14, which is the template that cuts across all of the program. It is the integrated program instrument that would be, that again, would cut, our specific items that cut across all of the categorical programs that we monitor. So, with that, I'm open to any questions, and I have my staff here as well, in case your questions are of a particular nature, for which I might need some additional support.
Ruth? Well, as somebody who read this and probably read it for content rather than form, may not have been the right thing for me to do, but in terms of form, I think this is very clear. I don't think anybody would have to be filling, any one office would have to be filling out all of these, right? A district would have to fill out each one of these if they ran, obviously, if they ran every program, they would. But, not like us, who gets this whole big thing and, you know, and would have to fill the whole thing out if we were, you know, a superintendent or of a small district. Would we have to fill all this out?
Well, if you receive funding...
Shocking, isn't it?
Actually, let...
Okay. Well, let me clarify what I tried to say here, folks. We had to read all, I read all of this.
Right.
Okay? And my questions on this, I like the form, I understand that it relate, what you've done in terms of relating it to the educational code, but I read it for content, and there were a couple of questions I had that were probably very simple, simple questions, because they're about content rather than form, which is what this is about. And so, if you could answer those two, then I'll think, maybe my reading would have served some purpose. One question I had was under the Governance and Administration, number two, on the gate pupils, on gifted and talented education.
I'm sorry, that's attachment four?
Attachment four. And nowhere does it say, and maybe it's where these students or when these students are identified as gifted and talented. Is there any place on the form for that? Or should there be?
Well, let me, let me first answer your question in that you, as a district, would not be required to complete this form. This is the form that we would use when we come to review a program.
Okay.
That CDE staff comes to review the program.
Okay.
So, they would come and they would follow through each of the core items that are listed...
Okay.
...to ensure that the LEA who receives funds under gifted and talented...
Right.
...are meeting the requirements and statute.
Okay. So, our role in here is to approve this form for our staff, our office, the Department of Education, to go out and evaluate these programs, whether they're following the rules.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. It's a little bit clearer. Then, I want to ask you one other question, because the sentence didn't make sense to me, and maybe you can clarify it. Under, on page 11 of attachment 11, it talks about, I think it's the highly qualified standards, it's a standards assessment and accountability. So, it's got under 14.1 here. Low-income and minority students are taught at equal or higher rates than other students by qualified or experienced teachers. Am I to understand that qualified and experienced teachers are first to go to the classrooms of low-income and minority students? Is that the question this is asking? It's not clear to me.
You know, let me yield to my program staff that they're here in that particular question. I mean, I did see Bill Vacy earlier, and I'm not sure if he's still here with us. Or Bill Warf?
Please come to the microphone.
Oh. So, you mean I found a typo?
No, it seems to be saying that they're quality teachers in the classroom with these kids who really need it, that it's at equal, at an equal level or a higher level in terms of making sure that they're getting academic support that they need, is what it seems.
So, I'm the guy from the Department of Education, and I'm going into this program, and I'm asking whether or not you have highly qualified teachers for this group of students.
Right.
Okay. So, the "not," where does that fit in?
No, they're not.
It isn't?
No.
It's just kind of an awkward sentence, is what it is. I think I understand that, but it isn't clear, and I didn't know who this... Yeah, everybody should have one.
Lee, maybe you should wordsmith the document. Okay, Joe, and then I think I had Yvonne, but Kathy, do...
I was just going to answer Ruth's initial question. You just identified something with respect to gifted and talented that's not actually in the law, and that's why you don't see it here. It's sort of assumed that they, that the district will identify gifted and talented children and will, you know, set up criteria for doing that, but there's no, there's nothing in the law that says, "When did you identify them? Where did you identify them?" There, you know, it's up to the district to set the criteria and the timeline for doing that.
Okay. Joe, and then Yvonne.
Actually, I am the board liaison to this conference, and have the opportunity of a lot of years to meet with this group. And actually, when I met with staff, I mentioned to them that it was a very different meeting than the first one that I attended a number of years ago, because the first one, a number of years ago, we actually were fighting over whether or not those items were actually in the law. And it's very, this goes to your question, why is it there? Well, somebody thought it was a nice thing that could be there, but where was it in the law? And in some cases, the law had... And in some cases, the law had gone away, and it was still in the CPR. And so, it was really important to, it was actually a pleasure this time to see that they have spent a tremendous amount of time and effort going through and making sure that it's the law that's reflected in this document, and then also to see how nicely it's laid out and easy to read, and very clear and carefully done. It was also a pleasure. So I just wanted to thank the staff for hanging in there and taking all the time it takes to, and I understand they had a room full of the, you know, the ed codes plastered all over, going, you know, where does that fit? Is that in the law or not? They actually spent a lot of time making sure that this document accurately reflects what the law is currently, and does not have.
Extraneous, right.
That are maybe nice, but actually are not.
Thank you.
So I want to thank all of you.
Right, I'd like to echo those comments, because I know it was a long haul, and that there's, reflects, this approved, vastly improved document reflects a lot of hard work. So thank you to the CDE staff for that. Yvonne?
Thank you for answering Ruth's question that this document is for your use, right? Not the, okay. So now, let me to the next question. So, whether it's a district or school that's being CCR'd, and so would they, what, prepare, just like before, a cell review or checklist based on their LEA plan? What do they have to provide to you so that you can have some correlation?
Well, we will produce training materials and a guide for the process. Today was here just to describe the instrument for review. Now, getting ahead of that, though, I would say that this past year, as we implemented some of the redesign, districts in the past were asked to do a self-assessment, submit it to the department, identify areas of weakness, and then when the department came out to do the review, to look for, in particular, those areas which had been self-identified. We've changed that process, because under current law, all school districts, LEAs, are required to do an annual review of their LEA plan. And you know that their LEA plan works in conjunction with their consolidated application, because it's the money that flows to engage those programs in a description. So we've advised the districts that these would be the areas, this is the instrument, that we would be coming out to monitor. A district knows which of the programs, or categorical programs, for which they receive money, and that they should ensure that they are meeting the intent of the law as, in the program outcomes, as well as the specific points that are listed within this instrument. That's what would be different about what we'll go forward with. So that, to answer your question, they would not do a self-review, except that for which they would normally or automatically do under the reviewing their LEA plan.
May I ask one short one? Alan and I just talked about, not that I'm asking for it, okay, that since charter schools are supposed to be CCR too, so does this apply to charter schools?
Yeah, if it receives this categorical.
Do you know that? Oh, you better know that now.
Is this a new, is this a new policy?
No, no, no. Charter schools are CCR'd.
Now, maybe conversion charter schools.
And they're coming, they're coming. No, Alan, please.
I think our school district was the last one possibly to be reviewed under the old system, but informed by the new one. And not only is the process different, it's reflected in this document, and this is a tribute, I think, to the superintendent. The entire mood of the process was so entirely different from the way it was when I first experienced it seven years ago. I mean, this was not that it was a, not a, it was a critical, it was not a gotcha. It was, but it was a critical, you know, we talk a lot in our world of critical friends, and we don't, it's more often absent, conspicuous, quiet absence. But this was a real critically friendly process that actually helps us do an assessment of how we can improve. So I want to add my, it's not only the formal improvement, it's a different mindset and different cultural, thank you, I'm gonna, I think you're exactly right.
You keep helping me up.
But you capture it right. This is a different culture and an important forward move, so.
Thank you.
And just one more comment. In addition to the revised document, there will also be ongoing training of those that will go into the field to do the CCR audits, and I'd like the board to be updated on the continued training of those auditors, I guess we're calling them.
Certainly.
I understand that Camille was sharing with me that that will be an ongoing piece of, a big piece of this as well. And one question, Camille and I had a conversation about this, we, the board packet, on a board mailing, we had a couple-page memo, and I liked it because it was a visual aid, and it had in our program dimensions here, that you have in the CCRs, they had a wheel of sorts, and in the middle was the teaching and learning, and then the spokes out from them were the other six components. So because I asked, well, this is all about teaching and learning, right? This is, that's the most important priority that we have here, and those other areas feed into that. So I just wanted to make that clear, because it's not a lack of the priority and number seven of teaching and learning.
Right.
It's at the center.
Right.
Okay. All right, do we have public comment on this?
You do. I have a number of speakers signed up, including ones whose name I couldn't read, so, his last name, anyway. I've got Dick Bray or Sheri, Keith, whose last name I couldn't read, Martha Diaz or Kim Ship. And again, if I don't call your name and you still want to speak.
Sheri Griffith with AXA. We'd really like to commend the department and the board staff for the work that they've done in streamlining the CCR templates. It is a breath of fresh air. We were part of that process. It really is focused on the shells versus the maze. We think that with the legal team review, you really have a tight document, documents for all the categoricals that we can work with. We'd also like to participate in the ongoing development of the manual and the training, and we do want to encourage that the CCR reviewers have training in facilitation skills, writing skills, good communication skills. Really, the devil will be in the details when you get to the local level. It's all about the process, so we look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you, Sheri.
I promise you all, this is my last item. Kim Ship, Oakland Unified School District, representing the common man, parents and students. I would just like to say that I think that this is a very good document, it's clear and concise, having participated in CCRs before as a parent, and being in the report-out session, I think that this does the job. We will be, and our district going into a CCR next week, and so I think that we'll be able to gleam exactly what the state will find from us by reviewing these documents. I was really impressed, and one of them, I think it was attachment number 14, I think, the one on program improvement, where the first component was involvement, and it said, "Parents and local education are writing the site plans." So I would like to commend staff, all the work you've done in terms of making this process a little bit more clear and concise. Thank you, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Kim. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Keith Johannes, and I'm the president-elect for CAEPARD, the California Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. I guess you can see why we go by CAEPARD. We want to share our concerns with you regarding the revised physical education CCR instrument, that is, attachment number eight. And just three of the eight items are not to be reviewed, and so five of them have been eliminated. The revised instrument eliminates the items that review compliance with the law related to important physical education mandates. The first one I'd like to mention is that all students in grades five, seven, and nine participate in health-related physical fitness testing program, and I'll share some numbers with you a little bit later, time permitting. The second item it eliminates is schools are to share their health-related fitness scores with the community through their school accountability report card. The third item it eliminates is one that the high school course offerings and course content in the other CCR, California Code of Regulations, I believe is what it's called, that is eliminated from this as well. Another, the fourth item that's eliminated are the federal, reviewing the federal and state laws, reviewing co-educational inclusive instruction, those federal and state laws, that review process is eliminated from this current CCR, and I think it need, one of the things that needs to be put back in. And the fifth thing it eliminates is appropriate teacher credentialing in, for the instruction in physical education. California schools are being distracted from meeting their legal obligations to students in the area of physical education, and our members have loudly praised the coordinated compliance review process these last two years. There have been tremendously positive responses from these, because they've had the eight items in there for the last two years. Let me give you just two quotes here. First quote, "Last year, over 30% of the ninth graders at our school did not take the fitness test. Nobody cared. This year, there is a new awareness and emphasis not only on testing all students, but on using the data to inform instruction." End quote. The second quote is, I'd like to present to you today, "I've been teaching second grade for 16 years, and this is the first time there has been any direction from our principal on teaching PE. We have some work to do in this area, but we are making efforts. It is so important for our kids." End of quote.
That's time, two minutes?
Okay, I think my point is, we'd like to have the all items shared, and for background information, you might take a look at the Superintendent's Task Force on Child Obesity, Type II Diabetes, and Cardiovascular Disease. Some very compelling information in that document to support what I'm saying.
Thank you very much for those comments.
I had some suggestions for the gentleman from Coachella, I think, on, he was cutting back on PE. There are things you can do in PE to teach language as well.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Martha Zeragoza Diaz, and I'm representing the California Association for Bilingual Education and the Californias Together Coalition. And the staff had a daunting task before them in terms of streamlining the CCR process. They did a very good job. I would like to thank them for being very willing to have stakeholders to review the instrument. We were able to do so, and we look forward to working with them on the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so, Gino, do you want to just comment quickly on the PE standards for me? The, excuse me, CCRs? The gentleman was talking about.
Sure, I'd be glad to. In fact, actually, what I'll do is I'll yield to my program staff. When I started my presentation, I said I was honored on behalf of the superintendent and the department. And there was a cross-department effort in this, and in particular, guided by Diane Levin and two key workhorses, Jim Greco and Bill Waroff. So let me yield to them in particular on this issue on physical education.
Thank you very much. It looks like Bill Vacy to me.
We have virtual staff. They asked me to speak on the physical education piece. Bill Vacy, Director of Professional Development and Curriculum Support. One of the issues we have in looking at this process is physical education's a very important area. So is mathematics. And we have to draw some balance in coming up with a CCR process. It doesn't look at every section in the education code of what's required, but picks out some key areas. And so we made in physical education, we picked out the key areas that are not only in the education code, but the education code also requires us to monitor in those areas. And we were trying to come up with some balance. It's not that those areas aren't important, they are very important. And we want to encourage, and clearly Superintendent has identified this as one of the three major initiatives, some very important areas. But if you left everything in the education, everything in the CCR document was in the education code, you couldn't have that change in culture, you couldn't have that visit. And so it won't, it isn't that those things won't be ignored, it's just they aren't a required part of the CCR visit. And that was the balance that we were trying to do. We looked at not just, is it in the education code, but is it required that we monitor for that? And we tried to come up with some appropriate balance, and there's some important things that are, they can't all be there.
Understood. Thank you very much for that, Bill. All right, if there's no more board comment, then I need to make a motion that would state the following, Dean, that the CCR instruments presented in the last-minute memorandum are consistent with board policy and direct the executive director and NCLB liaisons to review the CCR instruments that have not yet been completed to determine if they are consistent with board policy. Lee, second, by Jonathan, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks very much, Gino. Thank you, staff. So this is from the CDE. Okay, moving on to item 16. And 15 was acted on earlier, and the proposed consent.
Before Carrick starts, we're hearing that, from the audience, that they're not able to hear you, so please make sure you wait to hear your voice be raised on your mic, you know, and if it doesn't come on one way, push the button and see if it works that way, and move closer to them, because they're not hearing us in the room.
Sorry, sound check, sound check.
Carrick Ashley, Director for Data Management. That's Carrick Ashley, Director for Data Management. Just trying to follow direction. I'm here to present item number 16, giving you an update on the LEAs that received conditional approval of their consolidated application back in November. Just a very brief update for those of you who weren't here in November. The consolidated application is a document that saw over 1,200 LEAs download from our internet, complete and submit to us electronically, school districts, county offices of education, and direct-funded charter schools, to apply for 16 different state and federal programs. It's a combination, both state and federal programs, that totals 3.2 billion, that goes out the door every year for these programs. Programs such as Title I, Title II, Title IV, and so forth. We give two, or I should say, we present and you give two types of approval to these applications, regular approval for those that meet all the requirements, and then for a small number of LEAs, conditional approval. In November, we presented applications to you, and there were 12 districts in which you gave them conditional approval. The condition was that they would make progress toward resolving some of their non-compliant issues that were found related to CCRs, the document you just looked at, from prior years. Now, they only come to you for conditional approval if they've been over 365 days non-compliant, and the issues are considered of a serious nature. So, at the November meeting with those 12 conditionals, you requested that we come back to you in the spring and give you an update on those 12 districts and how they are doing in the resolution of those items, which is the attachment. The good news here is that five of these 12 districts have completely resolved all of their non-compliant issues. The other seven, you're given an update there as to the number of issues in the third column that they've already resolved, in the fourth column, the issues that are still remaining to be resolved, and in the comment section, you will see that all of them are anticipated to be resolved by the end of next month of the school year. So there's no action required of you for this board item. This is for your information, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Please. Have the non-compliant issues seem to be over an English learner advisory committees or some kind of program evaluation, I think, process? I think that's what the other one was. But I find it really interesting that it, so many of them, the ones that aren't compliant, can't put these advisory committees together. Do you have a comment on that?
Well, I don't work specifically for the school and District Accountability Division, and they're the ones that monitor these districts, but as someone who used to do these reviews, what happens often on these programs is that school principals change, program directors at schools change. Somehow, it just slips through the cracks that they're supposed to have an advisory council. They rely on their school site council to handle those English learner issues. Now, why it takes them so long to resolve that issue is something else that I can't really address.
Sometimes it's a question of participation at the school, the DLEC committees, that sort of thing. So it's hard on parent participation. Okay, Jonathan?
Earlier today, Member Gill mentioned a discrepancy that was listed between the two, and if you look at item 14 on the CONAP, it says 16 programs and 2.4, I'm sorry, item 15 is 2.4 billion, 16 in the CONAP, and item 16 is 16, again, programs, federal programs, 3.2 billion. So wondering if there was an edit problem or a program add that we missed, or?
There must be. 3.2 is the accurate number.
3.2, so item 15 should represent that?
That's correct.
Thank you, Jonathan, for that. All right, any other questions or comments? And do we have public comment, Deborah? Okay, no public. Okay, no public comment. Any further comment from the board? All right, thank you very much, Karik. I'm glad to see the follow-up on this. It's an interesting chart you have. Thank you. All right. That leads us to SARC, item 17. Bill Padilla, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Bill Padilla, Policy and Evaluation Division. I'd like to introduce Rachel Perry, who's the administrator of a unit in my division that handles the SARC and she'll present the item.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to present you with a proposed template and data definitions document for the school accountability report card, or SARCs as we fondly call them, that will be published during the next school year, 2005, 2006. The state board annually approves these documents, usually at this time each year, as is required by state law. Just as a reminder to those of you who have heard me before and, and information for those of you who are new, the template includes all of the required reporting elements through state and federal law. It's a guide and it's in attachment one for you. School districts may choose to use the template that we developed or they may choose to develop their own report card. As long as their report card includes all of the required elements, it's okay by us. What we do at the department is we produce the blank template, which is essentially what you have in the, in the attachment, for school districts in the summer of each year so that they can begin planning to produce these documents in the fall. In the fall, once data is collected through a variety of mechanisms such as C-beds and the STAR data, we produce what's called a template with data. And basically what we do for schools is we provide them about 80% of the, of the data that is required for them to complete their accountability report card. Now, in terms of the data definitions, that's attachment two. You can see it's a rather lengthy document, but it does support each table in the template. Basically what it does is it describes each reporting element and it also provides the legal reference for each reporting element. This year, we've made a number of changes to the SARC template and the data definitions. Those are summarized on page two of your board item. There are two additions that I'd like to propose today after some recent conversations that we had with attorneys for the Williams plaintiffs from the ACLU and from public advocates. And those two are regarding two of the tables in the template. The first is for the school facility conditions table, the results of inspection and evaluation, which is on page three of 16 of attachment one. And what we propose to do is amend the description of the table so that it reads, determination of good repair as documented in a completed interim evaluation instrument. Parenthesis, note the school site inspection date, the interim evaluation instrument completion date and the date of any remedial action taken or planned. So that last date about the actions that the school site will be taking or plan to take regarding any of the facility's needs that are found to be out of good repair is an addition that we would like to make. The next change is with regard to the textbook and instructional materials tables. These are found on page 12 and 13 of the template. The first is the quality and currency of textbooks and instructional materials and the second is the availability of sufficient textbook and materials. We've become aware that the description of those tables has been a bit confusing to our colleagues out in the schools and the school districts in that it may be misleading and causing them not to report locally adopted instructional materials for kindergarten or for the elementary grades, basically. So what we'd like to do is clarify that, specifically removing the grade span parenthetical phrases that exist currently behind the state adopted phrase and the locally adopted phrase. So with that, I'll open it up to questions or comments from you.
Rachel, I have a question. On that last change at the bottom of page 12, for example, could you read how it would read and then I might have another question?
It will read, list of the standards aligned, grades K through 12 and state adopted or locally adopted instructional, I'm sorry, textbooks and other instructional materials and so on.
Would that perhaps give the impression to the district that they, that at K8 they could either have state adopted or locally adopted?
No. I'm going to call my good friend Tom Adams up to answer that question for you.
Please keep in mind that the current forms that we have on the Williams website do allow for, excuse me, an alternate definition of sufficiency. So if we do have people who say are using, let me take for instance, their science program or history social science program uses parts of another state adopted program that has, say, that covers parts of those and has coupled it together with some other supplemental materials, then that fits the definition of sufficiency. So in that sense, we have to allow the form to cover those situations for this year.
Okay. I just wonder if there's a way to footnote that. I mean, I, I just want to make sure that the document's not misinterpreted to think that you no longer have to have, let's say, a board adopted reading program for K8. And if we put an or there, it may imply that they could do either one. So if we could maybe footnote it and remind them that, you know, refer them maybe to an ed code section or something so that it, so that it doesn't imply that it's okay at K8 to just use locally adopted materials.
Karen?
There is, it depends on what funding source you use. And so I think we'd like the authority to, to craft the language to make sure that it complies with current law and make sure that we get it so it's clear for everyone, if we could do that.
Okay. So that will, right, right. I appreciate Kathy's comments and then we'll wordsmith it to make sure that that works for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Were there any other changes?
No other changes.
Okay.
Well, they are summarized in your board item, but those are the two additional changes that were not included in the board item.
Okay. And do we have public comment on this?
I'm Brooks Allen with the ACLU of Southern California, on behalf of the counsel for the Williams versus California team. Really just here to say thank you and that we support these changes. We think that staff, the board and the department have done an exemplary job in this field of trying to implement the terms of the settlement, stay consistent with that. And we really appreciate all the hard work and thank you for the continuing good work and relationship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Anyway, all right. Any other board comment, questions on item number 17? So then the motion would be to approve staff recommendation along with the added changes.
With the amendments recommended by staff.
Thank you. With the amendments recommended by staff. Exactly what I said. Thank you. All right. Do I have, Glee, maker of the motion, and I, do I have a second? Jonathan? All those in favor? Okay. No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right. Moving on, item 18. Camille? Back again?
Good afternoon. One more time. What you have on item 18 is the revised Uniform Complaint Procedure Regulations that have been out again for another 15 days. Just for new board members, just a little bit of history. In November 2004, the board released Uniform Complaint Procedure Proposed Regulations for public comment. Those, the revision was to update the regulations that were established in 1997 and also to include regulations that were a result of the settlement on the Williams case. During that, during February, we received in follow-up discussion, a number of comments that we brought back to the board in March. We put those out for an additional 15 and the ones we bring back to you today are a result of comments from constituents on those. And we are asking that you approve those to go out for another 15 days. Additionally, it was brought to our attention to address a constituent concern that we had said already we would. There is a minor change that we would like to add to our list of language and that would be in section 4632G. We've checked with both of our attorneys and they've said, yes, that that's strictly appropriate. And, and what it does is simply make consistent language in another part of the regulations.
15?
15.
What does it say? I'm sorry. I'm going to let, do you guys? There's a, in G, it currently says if the, this is the appeal process for the UCP. If the department finds that the decision is supported by substantial evidence, the appeal shall be denied. That only speaks to the factual situation and so we need to add a phrase about the legal requirement. So the addition would be, after substantial evidence, it would say, "And that the legal conclusions are not contrary to law." I think we can all agree. "And that the legal conclusions are not, are not contrary to law." We try to do that.
So what we're asking for today is to go out for another 15 days so we can come back in July.
Okay. So do we have board comment or questions?
I just wanted to compliment you and thank you for adding on page six of 34 that the department will develop a pamphlet for parents. That will explain the uniform complaint procedures in a user-friendly manner and post this pamphlet on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Public speaker? I thought we were, go ahead. Let's go to the speakers. I don't see the, a lot of comment here. Let's go ahead.
There are a number of speakers and I apologize in advance for anyone whose name I mispronounced. Sheri or Dick Bray, Martha Diaz Guillermo, Mariah Rowe, Alma Hernandez, I'm Gabriel Modell and Tierrana, I can't pronounce that at all, Gomez.
Sheri Griffith with AXA. We're very comfortable with the final amendments and are looking forward actually to the final regulations so that educators in the field can ensure that the notices that they're posting in the classrooms conform to these new regulations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Martha Guzman with the California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation. We do also appreciate the staff's time and working with us and thus far and all the amendments they've taken thus far, but we're still very concerned with the amount of evidence that is now being placed on the parents, on the burden is being placed on the parents when they present their complaint or their appeal. And we have specific additional, and they did change the language, but it's still a little, the burden is still there. And I'm referring to, again, for the local process, section 4631C. It's a concern because this language can be interpreted very subjectively, especially at the local level. If you're raising a complaint against a principal or superintendent and they're the ones could get to decide if this evidence is sufficient, it's obviously a, a new burden. Same with the department's procedures in section 4663C. It's the same burden. And when you lack onsite investigations in particular, this, this is a new burden strictly on the parents. And again, on the appeal process of the local agency, there is section 4632B. This is on page 13. Again, the parent has to prove if the facts are incorrect and/or if the law is misapplied. All of these burdens on the parents that we typically represent are extremely strenuous. Currently, these, this kind of wording is not in the regulations and we've worked very successfully with the department to effectively make school districts or schools into compliance with state law. So we've not very clear on what the need of the language change is because current regulation is working for our parents and students.
That's two minutes?
Same as with the direct state intervention, there's been an elimination of discrimination claims for direct intervention.